Councilmember Wilcoxon and Councilmember Simmons.
Evening, Mayor.
The meeting is now called to order. The clerk said it's seven o'clock. So clerk, please lead us forward.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Present.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Somerville?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Simmons?
Present.
Councilmember Jones Chance?
Present.
It's all present. There is a quorum.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Or?
Been moved and supported to approve the agenda as it stands. Are there any corrections or additions? Okay, seeing none, can we have a vote?
BJC, Councilmember.
Okay, Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yeah, if I could interrupt with a brief statement, if I could.
Okay, can we carry the motion? Is it pertaining to the agenda?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that that go to the top of the agenda, if it's okay.
Or whatever it is.
You know what it is.
So we do have an addition to the agenda. All right.
So Councilmember Jones Chance, you would just like to add a brief statement after agenda approval?
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right. Okay, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, hearing none, this agenda stands approved as with an addition, so, okay. Councilmember Jones Chance?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone for appointing me in the first place. I sent you all an email earlier today. And I've enjoyed serving, but I am going to resign the seat effective now so that you all have the freedom to decide on what the appointment process is going to be. You know, my main concern is that the public see that we are doing the best we can with the situation that we have. And that the elected members are the ones making the decision, so.
Can I say something to that?
Yes, you may.
Brian, Councilmember Jones Chance, I sent you an email back, and I sent you a text last night, and you replied, and you gave me some word of wisdom, but I just want to tell you what I said. I says, it just said that your honesty, your intellectual capacity, your cool and fair demeanor is refreshing and a compliment to what was already present. You have served quickly, graciously, and honorably for the brief time. Thank you for your willingness to serve, your humility, and just what you're doing right now, again, creating transparency, is honorable. It's honorable, and I know it's not false humility, and so I appreciate that on so many levels, which I think most people saw, which gave you an edge, just again, your fairness and your easy, fair, cool demeanor. So I just want to say thank you for serving with us. You were a great part of our addition to our team.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yeah, I too just want to thank Councilmember or former Council, I don't know how this works, Councilmember Brian Jones Chance, for the short time that he served with us, especially sharing the word with me. We collaborated very quickly and started some really important things. And so I really thank you for jumping right in and having so many thoughts and like, you know, thinking outside of the box and beyond my capacity, as far as like, I'm not a business-minded person, I'm a social worker, so you know. I'm the people part, and you were bringing some of the business to it, so I really appreciated that. And I just thank you so much for being willing to step into this role, especially for such a short time. I really appreciate that, and I think the community does too.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Everybody.
Councilmember Steve Wilcoxon?
I think Mr. Morgan summed it up really well. Those are pretty much my sentiments exactly. It's been a pleasure hearing your comments and with your input. Haven't had a chance to interact with you outside of here, but it's always been pleasant hearing. I'd like to like you brought, you know, the complimentary thoughts were great, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? If not, I'm not forcing anyone, but.
There's Jennifer waving her hand.
Okay, Jennifer, last night I had everybody on the same screen. Yes, Councilmember Simmons.
Councilmember Jones Chance, I also wanted to say thank you. It's not easy to serve in any capacity. And again, I sincerely appreciate anytime anyone's willing to step up and, you know, being appointed, I think that's not a fun process either, but you know, I didn't necessarily think that you had to resign, maybe just recuse yourself kind of from the appointment process, but again, I appreciate your willingness to, you know, have the transparency and just make it look, you know, be a fair process and give that appearance of that, so. Thanks, and I look forward to working with you, you know, in whatever capacity it might be, moving our city forward. So again, just thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. I see you're unmuted, Councilwoman Somerville. Did you have?
Oh, yeah, sorry, my hands up. Well, I didn't want to be the only one to say. I mean, I also have enjoyed working with you and would be, you know, I think I made this pretty clear last night, that I would, you know, would be willing to just move forward with reappointing you to this position, but I totally respect your stance on this. Yes, thank you. We'll be missing you for the next, I don't know, month about, so.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of leave that up to you all what to do.
Councilmember Jones Chance, I think you know that I'm really going to miss you. We've had just a short time together, but I think we really got to know each other in many ways, and it was a real pleasure working with you and look forward to working with you again on any, in any capacity that you choose to become active in the city, and particularly in Ward One. I enjoyed your enthusiasm, enjoyed your zeal to see, to want to get things done. I remember you said, "I've got just two months. What can I get done in that time?" And I think that you really did make an impression on, I know, on the people in Heritage, the Heritage Park Association. Thank you again, and I look forward to, you know, continuing to work with you, like I said, in whatever capacity. So thank you very, very much for making yourself available to the city. And as I think someone said, it would have been nice just to continue on or to have made that, but I appreciate, as Councilmember Morgan said, it's refreshing. Your humility and your honesty and your transparency is refreshing, so all the best to you in whatever you do. And remember, love is the answer, so, thank you. You're welcome.
Council, the next item on the agenda is public comments.
Do I go off into the shadows here?
Yeah, I can do that for you.
You're not leaving the meeting, are you?
All right, I'll change you to attending now, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. We're all on the same screen.
Hey, we sure are.
One, two, three, no, we missing, one, two, three, four, five, six. We missing somebody. Oh, Jennifer's not on my screen. No, she is.
Oh, Jennifer's on mine, yeah, okay.
Oh, Jones Chance, I was like, who we missing someone? Okay.
Okay.
Don't blame me. I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, should we have any hands up?
Yes, Mayor, there are currently two members in the audience with their hands raised. The first one with their hand raised was Karan Gaines. Allow them to speak now.
Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, hello, Councilmembers. I just want to say that I've been doing a little research, and I created, me, myself, and others in the community of Ward One, have created a team called Team Southside, and we have a banker, a few people, credit repair agents, realtors, and I mean, successful people, not people who just got an LLC a week ago and took a two-week class. They're experts in what they do. And we came up with a group called Team Southside, and we'll be meeting 12 times a year, starting in January. And I just pitched this to City Council, you know, for help, you know, for whether you in Ward One or not. I think this could be real effective. What we're trying to do is turn residents into citizens. And we did a little research. I walked around Ward One. Out of 100 families that I asked, what's more important out of violence or housing? 63 said the violence is more important for them. So I think City Councils should know that. And I have it documented, recorded, me walking up to people, asking them. I'll be releasing all of this in the next few days. I also counted every unit in Ward One, minus a few duplexes and minus Chittister Place and Town Center Place. I didn't include them, which is 321 units combined. But I counted 995 units that's connected, you know, with apartment buildings and complexes. And I looked at it and I said, well, order for us to build on our property value and things of that nature without gentrifying people, which the process has already begun years ago, we need to educate them on credit repair and homeownership constantly, monthly. We can't just, not saying we, as I'm speaking to you guys, but I'm saying in general, we can't just do a town hall meeting every three months and think it's gonna help the most vulnerable area in Ypsilanti. So I figure we meet 12 times a year, every month. If you missed it the month before, we coming back again. Everybody agreed that's a part of Team Southside. They agreed to this. I have a whole video stream, social media presence that I will be releasing in two days from now, so you guys will be able to see all of this, and we've been working very, very hard. So I just wanted to pitch this tonight to the City Council and our Mayor, that I'll be asking for help from you guys, because Ward One really, really needs it. So any ideas anybody have, inbox me, email me, text if you have my number, and we will really, really appreciate you guys' help.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Appreciate it.
All right, Council, the next individual in for public comment will be Amber Fellows. I'll allow them to speak now.
Hello, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Goodness, Fellows.
Hello. So I am just jumping on last minute to comments on the ordinance to change the process for ethics complaints. I support that. I don't imagine that there will be many issues with that change, but I just wanted to lend my support to that process change. And I do want to mention that, you know, I think, you know, what I'm seeing is Council trying to make the best of a bad situation, but I think it would be remiss to let it pass without saying that the, you know, the process for the Ward One race and the reappointment and all of it has been a pretty big failure as far as transparency goes. Nobody really understood what was going on, and here we are in a kind of another successive appointment issue, which is not very infringing of the folks in Ward One. And, you know, I'm in solidarity with those folks, and I think that they deserve a better process. I know that it was in part interpretation issue with the city charter, and so I urge Council to form a charter commission. Charter, I know, has had some amendments in the last 20 years, but from my understanding, the largest change, the last time it changed was 1994. So we are definitely overdue for a charter commission, if not only just to sort out the situation of when a mayor resigns. And so I would be supportive of that. And then the last thing is stuff with Water Street, the letter of intent from the developer, I know that they haven't submitted it yet. There's still some more meetings, but I would just say, you know, it's, I feel good about how they're answering and being responsive to residents so far. It's been a dialogue. I would just urge you not to move forward unless they adjust their letter of intents to reflect some of the things that people are saying. For me, it's particularly affordable housing part, 10% is just simply not enough, and I think there needs to be more like, more details to what they mean by affordable housing and how that's going to be defined. So that is all I got to say tonight, and hope you have a good night.
Thank you very much, Miss Fellows. Appreciate you coming, your comments, okay? Clerk?
Yes, Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Jakara Ventura. Allow them to speak now.
Hello, everyone. Well, I'm happy to be on the call, that's for one, but I wanted to first say thank you to Brian for serving our city. I got a chance to listen to the interview you did, and I was pretty intrigued by the things that you had planned or things that you were able to see that are available for us to do in the city of Ypsilanti. But the question that I had, also a concern, is how will we now know as residents or citizens of Ward One, how the rest of this process will continue to go forward with having another council member for us? Like, how will we be notified of the changes?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will answer your question before the meeting's over tonight, so, thank you.
Council, that would be the last individual with their hand raised, but we can wait for a moment to see if anyone else would like to make comment.
Okay.
By definition, how long is a moment? Like, what? Less than a minute? How much?
A few seconds.
Okay.
Depends on the poetic context. You could have a moment for a night.
Touche.
So it appears that no one else has their hand raised, so if Council wishes, we can move on to the first reading of the ordinances.
Council wishes.
Let's move on.
Okay, for ordinance 1357, resolution number 2020-062, it is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that an ordinance to amend section 46-34 of the Ypsilanti City Code to provide that ethics complaints be filed with the city clerk be adopted on first reading.
Support. Oh, support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Okay, any presentation on this, Clerk?
I'll just state, this was based off a recommendation that the Ethics Board sent. It was originally scheduled for the March 17th meeting. That would have been the last meeting that Council met in person. We struck many of the items that were not timely from that agenda, which is why it only lasted, I believe, it was seven minutes or so. And then following that, we were advised not to have public hearings basically for the time, and then this kind of fell through the cracks a little bit, but what this ordinance will mean is that all complaints are to be filed with the clerk's office rather than the city attorney's office, which is basically how ethics complaints were filed anyway.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, Councilmember Morgan?
I'm interested in knowing the difference. Well, I guess when complaints are filed with the city attorney, is that a legalese? Is it more of a legal? And being filed with the clerk, what is the main difference? And what powers do both parties have?
Well, the clerk department, the complaint would be filed with us, and then it's forwarded to the city attorney. It's just so that it's a matter of notice to make sure that the Board of Ethics is made aware.
How many people are currently serving on our Board of Ethics?
There were five. One member recently resigned.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is now open for the members of the audience to ask questions or comment.
Council, currently there is no one in the well, there's two people that would like to make comment. The first to raise their hand was Amber Fellows. Allow them to speak now.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I already named my support for this change. I just want to just underscore what was said is it's the noticing aspect, I think, is important because in the past, the complaints going to the city attorney's office means there, you know, potential for delay of the greater, the broader public knowing and the Ethics Commission knowing. So I think this was a better process and for it to go from the city clerk to the city attorney instead of the city attorney to the city clerk.
Okay, thank, thank you. So one more, you say?
Yes, Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Karan Gaines. Allow him to speak now.
Hello, everybody. I'm back again. I know it's gonna be a very short meeting tonight, so I didn't want to talk too long, but like I said, I'm very excited about this Team Southside thing, and the name of the project.
Mr. Gaines?
Yes.
I appreciate you, you're wanting to fill us in more on your project, but right now, we're only taking comments on the ordinance that is before us. The ordinance to send complaints for the Ethics Committee straight to the clerk's office. So if it's not, if your comments are not related to that, you can't have them at this time.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Well, thank you all. I'm still gonna be tuning in, listening. I definitely support it, and you guys keep working hard and keep doing, undoing things, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, no other members of the public currently have their raised, and if Council is all right with it, I can read the closing of the public hearing?
Please do.
Resolution number 2020-063 is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the public hearing for an ordinance to amend section 46-34 of the Ypsilanti City Code to provide the ethics complaints be filed with the city clerk be officially closed.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor? Do we need, we don't have to have a roll call vote for that, do we?
A voice vote would be fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any oppose? Okay, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Okay, is there any more discussion on the ordinance itself from Council?
I do have one final question.
Sure.
I'm interested in knowing, because I know that how often the Ethic Board, bear with me, how often the Ethic Board is engaged and how often they pass down rulings or sentences or whatever for violations? And, because it's a new process now, so either there was something going on that made it a problem, so it is the delay, I think that Miss Fellow said, I'm not sure, but how often do they meet? How often do they pass down sentences? Is it very often, or is it far and few between? And is the things that they intend to uphold, are they enforceable?
So the Ethics Board, the recent amendment is now required by ordinance to meet at least once a year. They do have two meetings that are regularly scheduled. They're more of a reactive board, so that when a complaint is filed, a special meeting would be called. There were, I believe, three ethics complaints filed in 2019, between 2019 and 2020. They did pass resolutions for follow-up on those and determine that the that there was follow-through with what the ruling was. Prior to that, the Ethics Board had been dormant, at least since I've been here since 2014. However, I will say that this ordinance really codifies for how those three complaints were filed. They were filed with the clerk's department and were forwarded to the city attorney, so it just codifies that process into this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, Clerk Kalinga, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Can we go to the next ordinance, please?
Yes. Resolution number 2020-238, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas the Traffic Review Committee has reviewed several traffic control requests and made appropriate recommendations based on best practices, city ordinance, and city policy. And whereas the City Council reviewed and approved policy direction for parking system changes in downtown, Depot Town, and West Cross. And whereas the Traffic Review Committee reviewed engineering recommendation for bridge weight limits. Whereas the Traffic Review Committee reviewed and recommended a request to parking adjacent to the Park Ridge Community Center to guests of the PCC and the Ypsilanti Housing Commission offices. And whereas the city manager has seen fit to issue temporary traffic control orders 2020-001 through 011, based on said recommendation. And whereas the city manager recommends City Council provide final approval for the traffic control orders listed above. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby approves traffic control orders as listed and adopts an ordinance entitled 2019 Winter Traffic Control Orders on first reading.
I'll move.
It's been moved. There's support?
Or?
It's been moved and supported. Is there a presentation for us, Clerk Kalinga?
Yes, Project Manager Westler is here to present.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm mainly here to answer any questions that you might have. All of the TCOs were included in your packet, and I hope we're fairly straightforward, so I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Westler?
Just one.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Westler, thank you for showing me around in Frog Island and all the new work that's being done, but with the the traffic, is this a continuation of a study that was, that's things that have, a culmination of things that's gonna, like, is this a culmination of things from the past, or is it in a company with our five-year plan also?
It's, some of them are sort of tidying up existing issues, so for instance, the converting of motorcycle parking on the South Huron Lot to handicap. That's an issue that we noticed recently. People weren't using it as handicap park or as motorcycle parking, but we almost always need more handicap placard parking. Those, that one was a one-off, the Park Ridge Community Center parking, that was a response to a request and an issue. But removing the on-street meters in the 200 and 300 blocks of West Cross, updating the time limitations on South Washington, handicap placards. handicap placards on South Normal and Freight House Lot, and the time limitations in Maple and on North River and on East Cross, those were all parts of, those were all pursuant to the parking study that we performed earlier last year, at the beginning of 2019, really.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman Somerville.
Thank you. A quick question. It's somewhat not related to this, but kind of is. I've had a few residents ask about the process of limiting on-street parking in the neighborhoods now that we're restricting parking in Depot Town. Is this an appropriate time to ask about that or should I wait?
It's a really simple process. They can go to cityofypsilanti.com/rpp and I think there's a fax, FAQs on there and that explains the process for adding a, an area to the residential parking permit.
Yeah, okay, that's it. It's cool. I will send them. Seems like a similar process to the
Yep.
Cool. Wanted to double. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments for Ms. Westler? Okay, not seeing any hands. Ms. Westler, I have one. Could you explain a little bit more to me about the parking at Park Ridge?
Sure. The management at Park Ridge Community Center and at the Ypsilanti Housing Commission were noticing some issues with cars left there for long amounts of time. We actually had a snowplow there that was there for probably about 18 months or so. And in order to discourage that and to discourage people from trying to park just outside of the the area to conduct illicit business in the park and in the housing there. They requested that we enact these limitations on the parking there between the Park Ridge Community Center and the YHC offices.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just didn't fully understand what was behind that. Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all right, the public meeting is now open.
Counsel, no one currently is in the attendees list that has their hand raised to make comments on the TCOs. Or we can wait for a few moments to see if anyone would like to make comment.
Okay.
Still seeing none. I can read the closing of public hearing?
Please do.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the public hearing for ordinance 1369 and ordinance entitled 2019 Winter Traffic Control Order be officially closed.
Is there a motion? Support?
Support.
Okay, I thought you moved.
Counselmember Morgan.
It was a tie. I missed my jeopardy button.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and properly supported to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any more, is there any more question, any more questions or discussion? Okay, all right, seeing none, would you call the roll, Clerk Kalinga, please?
Counselmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Counselmember Morgan?
Yes.
Counselmember Simmons?
Yes.
Counselmember Jones?
Whoops. That's okay.
Counselmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda was added today. Resolution number 2020-240A, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas there is a vacancy for council member in Ward 1. And whereas per section 2.05D3 of the city charter requires that a council member to represent Ward 1 be appointed on or before the third regular council meeting following the vacancy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approve the application and application process for the Ward 1 vacancy.
So move.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion.
So, so counsel, if I may, this is the, I see there are three options for this process. You can either file the application processes as was done in the past. There were three individuals that filed affidavits and were eligible to be voted for during this past Tuesday's election. The two other members that received votes could be interviewed and a select should be made from those two individuals. Or counsel could simply nominate and appoint a someone to the Ward 1 position. This is just something that was done in the past, so if this is the way that counsel would like to go, we'll start the process tomorrow.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
When he said, the two, you said it was three that were eligible by affidavit at the time of the election, at the time of
On this ballot, there was a Democrat nominee, an independent nominee, and then a valid write-in candidate. The individual, Mayor Richardson, who won the election, decided to stay in her role as mayor until 2022. So the remaining two candidates eligible for that election were Brian Jones Chance and Karan Gaines.
We can't start with those two and open it up to other people. Is that two different processes?
Yes, it would be two different processes. You could either select this application process and open it to all those eligible in Ward 1. Or you could simply interview those individuals that ran campaigns for this past election.
I vote for application.
Is there further discussion? Counselmember Wilcoxen?
I think going through the same process that we've done before opens it up to to other folks that may not have either applied during the previous appointment or had run for office. And so I can imagine that a lot of people saw your name on the ballot, Mayor Richardson, and left it at that. And so I think opening up the process will bring in more applicants.
Okay. Counselmember, Councilwoman Simmons?
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement with Councilmember Morgan and Wilcoxen to do by application, just to give the, you know, most amount of opportunities for people who may have an interest to go through that process.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to utilize the process of the application process for Ward 1.
Counselmember Morgan, that's already the motion on the floor.
Oh, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. This is the rebuttal. So I'm talking about the specific one. Okay, can't make a motion for the specific one, okay.
That's the one that's on the resolution now and he was just telling us what our other options.
Oh, the other options. Okay.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, then are we ready for the vote?
I'd call a question.
Thank you. Clerk Kalinga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Counselmember Morgan?
Yes.
Counselmember Simmons?
Yes.
Counselmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Counselmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Counsel? So Clerk Kalinga, when will you start that process? When will it be posted?
The timeline is included in the packet. This will be posted tomorrow. And then if you look through that timeline, I will remind counsel that two questions are due no later than November 20th at 5:00 PM, so we can get those compiled and get them ready for the at Tuesday meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so counsel, the next step is on us to get our questions in. Thank you. So we would, so going through this process, we would actually seat someone? When could, what, when would we anticipate seating someone?
December.
Counsel just needs to make appointment by December 1st of the third regular meeting following the vacancy. If counsel sees fit, it can make the appointment the day of the interviews. Or it can wait to deliberate further during the December 1st meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, well, let's move on. Any more other questions or thoughts about the application process? Okay, all right, seeing none, can we move on, Clerk, please?
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-240, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the minutes of November 10th, 2020 be approved.
Moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes? Do we need a voice vote on this one?
We'll do a roll.
Roll call, all right, thank you.
Counselmember Morgan?
Yes.
Counselmember Simmons?
Yes.
Counselmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Counselmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. Resolution number 2020-241, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the collection of trash in our downtown areas and city parks is an ongoing and important service offered to residents in the City of Ypsilanti. And whereas a small packer truck is necessary to collect recycling and trash. And whereas the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti has allocated the funds in the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget for this purchase. And whereas the purchase price of the vehicle is less than the budgeted amount of $95,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council authorized the purchase of a small packer truck from Frederickson Frederickson Supply and Signature Ford for a purchase price of $91,480 with any change orders to be approved by the city manager.
Support, I mean, so move.
Word.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have a presentation on this resolution? Or was it, okay, Mr. Akers, I didn't see you pop on the screen.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
So this small packer truck purchase is a scheduled vehicle replacement for our existing vehicle which we've had in our fleet since 2009. The vehicle is primarily used for trash collection in our downtown areas and city parks. And this vehicle will be used to collect recycling from public recycling containers when they are installed in the spring. The proposal is to purchase the truck and the dump body through the purchasing groups that we are part of via our MIAPWA Mechanics Consortium. The total cost of the vehicle is $91,480 and the funds for the purchase of the vehicle were allocated in the 1920 budget and have been carried over from that fiscal year. This total is under the budgeted amount that we had anticipated of $95,000. As we've discussed under prior vehicle purchases, counsel requests that staff provide alternative energy options for these vehicles for consideration. We have previously discussed that propane is a viable option. We've quoted approximately $25,000 additional to make the conversion for the larger vehicles in the past. But the same as we had discussed before, until we have a viable method of fueling our vehicles with propane that is easily accessible to our staff, we're not recommending the installation of the conversion kits at this time. However, staff is planning on including the installation of a propane filling station as a capital item in next year's budget for your consideration. And at that time, we'll evaluate potential costs for converting some of the vehicles in our fleet to be able to utilize the system. This concludes my summary and I'm happy to answer any questions counsel may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Counselmember Morgan?
Mr. Akers, what is the what would a propane system like that cost off the top of your head?
There's a couple of different types of propane conversion systems. So for some of the larger vehicles, there's ones that can cost upwards of $25,000. The advantage is it utilizes more propane. And thus you get better fuel saving or fuel, sorry, carbon emission savings. There are other conversion kits for some vehicles which cost as little as $7,000, $8,000, $10,000 per vehicle. What they use is they use a special injection system to blend the propane and the diesel fuel together. And you get like a 20% reduction on your carbon emissions from it. These are all aftermarket alterations. The company's name is Icon. And so we are able to implement this on a number of our vehicles at a later date. The challenge that we've had, primarily with putting them on now, is that the closest propane filling station is a half-hour drive away. So having our staff, you know, drive to its, its Ellsworth and Carpenter, having our staff drive all the way out there just to fill up and come all the way back and that's, you know, not including if there's a way to pump. It's just a more efficient use of our time to have our staff doing work around the city. But we've gotten quotes, we talked to Corrigan Oil, who is our fuel provider. They have given us quotes on the installation of propane filling stations. We've done a lot of the legwork with them already. It's just about, you know, setting aside the funds to be able to do it. So it's something that we should be able to implement. You know, if counsel chooses at a later date, it's something that we're able to take.
Last question. If we get this truck and we don't have that system, we're gonna have to make that trip out there anyway until we get it, correct?
Only if we install the system on the truck.
Okay.
System could be installed on the truck and then not used until later.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselmembers, Wilcoxen?
Oh, there's somebody else I didn't see. No, this all seems to be very straightforward and I've seen the truck that drives around to the parks thing gets that and it clearly needs to be replaced. I was just wondering why you didn't go with the anti-met or blue metallic color?
I'd have to talk with our mechanics. I don't know if there was a surcharge or something. I didn't get involved in the choosing of the color. But I can follow up if you'd like.
A splash of color around the city would be nice.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Kalinga, would you call the roll, please?
Counselmember Simmons?
Yes.
Counselmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Counselmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Counselmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations, Ron, your team.
You got a new truck.
Thank you.
Passing our trucks out here. It's Christmas time. The chief get a truck. Ron, you get a truck. Andrew, you get a truck.
A truck.
When do I get that truck?
See, that's what, that's what happens when people get stuck in Ohio. All right, Clerk Kalinga, please.
Resolution number 2020-242, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas county road millage funds have been allocated to perform road habilitation work on Oakwood between Sherman and Congress. and whereas the city engineer, OHM, has prepared a proposal to provide design engineering services for the project, and whereas design engineering is necessary to begin the project next construction season. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ypsilanti approves a proposal for OHM for design engineering services for an amount of $34,810, that the city clerk is authorized to sign this proposal and any change orders may be approved by the City Manager to facilitate the completion of this work.
So moved.
Support.
It moved and supported. Do we have any staff to report on this?
Yes, Mayor Richardson, I'll be, I'll be giving a summary.
Okay, thank you.
So this proposal is for design engineering for the Oakwood Street Rehabilitation Project that will occur next year in 2021. And this proposal also provides an alternative bid option for another project that we have to accomplish next year for the removal and restoration of the at-grade railroad crossing on Spring Street. As part of this proposal, the engineers are going to look at pavement cores and perform subgrain investigations for the other stretches of road that Council had selected for the Washoung County Road Millage funded projects as well. As I indicated, the section of road was identified by Council for rehabilitation as part of the city's allocation from the county road millage funds, and the at-grade rail removal will actually be partially funded through an M dot rail removal grant award. The engineering and the portion of the Oakwood project will be paid out of the city's Act 51 fund, but for the most part, these projects are going to be mostly funded via outside sources. Essentially, that concludes my summary. This is just design engineering. It kind of gets the ball rolling so we can get everything ready to bid out for spring next year. And I would be happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Simmons.
Oh, I just wanted to comment. I'm excited about this project and Oakwood Street getting some love, so looking forward to it. So thanks for all your work around, in your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Would you call the roll, please, Clerk of Linga?
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Broten Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Council, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 2020-243, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the fines and fees related to parking have been closely examined over the prior year, and whereas a certain fines have been reevaluated in light of the pandemic. Pilot permit program for weekly contractor passes shall be evaluated in March, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby approves the attached updated fee schedule for parking fees and fines and further authorize a weekly contractor pass pilot program.
Sir motion?
So move.
For.
It's moved in second. Thank you. Discussion, questions? Is this Ms. Westler again?
Yes, this is Mayor Richardson. Thank you.
Yes.
So this, this is meant to be an intermediary update to the fee schedule in light of some issues that we have discovered over the course of the past year that have, it's a good opportunity to fix our fee schedule due to the pandemic, oddly enough. So the, the major discrepancy that we're looking to address here is the, the fine for parking over the legal limit. It is slightly different than the fine for an expired parking meter. However, they're very similar violations, so we are looking to equalize those fees. The other thing that we're trying to do is to adjust the, the fine escalation schedule from a 14-day and 28-day fee escalation schedule to a 21- and 60-day fine escalation schedule. It aligns better with the turnaround for mailed ticket notices, so if somebody loses a ticket that was attached to their car, they actually have a chance to receive the mailed notice of violation in the mail and pay it before the fee increases. It also aligns a bit better with a lot of the common pay period, so if somebody's having some income difficulties, this, this gives them a little bit fairer of a shot at paying the ticket before the, the fee escalation sets in. The third thing that we're looking to do here is to pilot a contractor pass program. So currently, we have extensive residential permit parking zones. Contractors, especially contractors and private vehicles, often have to park in these zones in order to perform their work. Oftentimes, they get a ticket because perhaps their client didn't give them a visitor pass, or perhaps there's five or six vehicles and not everybody can get a visitor pass. We would like to, instead of having a discussion about how to appeal a ticket every time somebody gets one of these tickets, which are fairly expensive, instead offer them the opportunity to purchase a weekly permit. So if somebody needs to perform a applying job at 1, 2, 3, any street, they can purchase a contractor pass for the week that they anticipate doing the work and not have to worry about getting a ticket for that time period.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, any questions or comments for Ms. Wester? Yes, Councilwoman Somerville.
Yeah, I actually just wanted to make a motion to amend part of this fee schedule. I'd like to move to amend the permit parking for residents in the C District to actually significantly decrease it, if possible, to $33 every four months. Currently, those residents are paying 300 a year compared to $33 that other residents in the city are paying for their permits. Not sure if anybody's interested in supporting that motion.
I'll support that.
And this, this was something that was brought to my attention due to the pandemic and folks that live downtown, their concerns with the cost difference.
All right, it's been moved in second. Mayor Broten Brown?
Yeah, so I seconded the motion because I, I do have questions around the rationale for the difference in the fees for homeowner versus the renters in that district. And so if we could just get some background on that, that'd be great.
Sure, it's not about homeowner versus renter, per se. It is about the availability of parking. So with the residential permit areas, those are on-street parking and it's relatively plentiful and low maintenance, relatively being the operative term. Downtown, oftentimes, those are more, they're, it's more of a hot commodity and it requires more maintenance.
Okay, you, you want to follow up? Yes.
Yeah. Is there a rationale for how the amount was decided beyond like, you know, the, the maintenance pieces? Like how the 300 was? Is that like an arbitrary number?
That was well before my time, so unfortunately I can't speak to that.
Thank you.
Council. Councilmember Simmons.
Actually, Mayor Broten Brown asked the questions I was curious about, but I think Clerk of Linga has some info to add? If you don't mind, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
The, the fees for the downtown parking, I believe since the, the permit parking program, its inception in the 90s, the, there was only one increase. The four-month increment was $75, and I believe the, for the year was 250. I would suggest if Council does wish to make this change, do so at the adoption of the next fee schedule. Simply for fairness, many people have already purchased their downtown parking permits for this year, and they paid that full amount, so to, to decrease it now would essentially making those people pay an additional, you know, $70 that others will not have to pay. If the adjustment is made in July, the parking permits, basically the schedule begins at the end of August, and it would be at least fair for those who have already purchased their permits.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan?
Ms. Wester, with the parking passes, I was wondering, are they associated with the plates to a car? Or if I bought the parking pass and my cousin was in town from Boston, I could let him use it on his car?
They're associated with the plates to the car. If a downtown resident does not have their own vehicle, though, they can be issued what's called a location-only permit, so that when your cousin comes to stay, they can use that permit in the vehicle. And also, I just want to point out, at the beginning, well, I guess the middle of the pandemic, we did institute a new rate class, $150 for the full year to park only in the Washington Street lot. We've had a couple of takers on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I'm sorry, was there a second to the amendment? Motion to amend this?
Yes, Mayor, the motion was by Councilmember Somerville, seconded by Mayor Broten Brown.
Okay, so we need to act on that amendment. Motion. Councilmember Will Coxon?
I just have a question for Councilmember Somerville. Given the information that Mr. Holling said, is that, do you stand with the, the amendment that you proposed?
I mean, I think that part, like, part of my bringing this up was to bring attention to the fact that folks downtown are paying significantly more for the parking passes, and a lot of, like, a lot of attention has been brought up regarding this due to people staying home all day, working remotely during the pandemic. But I get that this could be unfair for folks who have already purchased passes. I do have some concerns that some people maybe haven't purchased parking passes because they can't afford that high price all at one time. So by lowering it, I think we could decrease the amount of tickets people are getting downtown who live there. So I guess like, yes, like, I'm definitely going to push for this at the next fee schedule, but I, and I remember bringing this up the last time we adopted this, and we got the same background. And I, you know, I, I guess I should have made the, the motion then. This, that was obviously pre-pandemic, and there wasn't, there, there's been a resurgence of complaints since that last time. So, but I do think that there's a, there, I've heard from a significant amount of residents downtown who have gotten, you know, who are getting more tickets, who can't necessarily afford to pay that for the, even just the four months at a time, because it's such a large sum of money to come up with at 115, so, or even 300 for the year, so.
Mayor Broten Brown?
So Councilmember Somerville, are you still wanting us to move on this motion? Are you gonna, do you want to remove it? And then wait until the fee schedule?
Um, sure, I, I, it doesn't seem like there's interest right now.
I, I just have questions about it. I mean, if, in terms of, sorry, were you done, Mayor Broten? So if people, people have a cheaper option on the Washington Street lot, right? And how many, how many spots are that? And I'm curious about how many people have bought this at the, at this rate? And so, and if there's a, a chance for a refund policy for those people that bought it between beginning of the cycle and now? Because it seems like if, if we're gonna make this fair, I mean, that's one way to do it. And the other questions I have in turn for, for Ms. Wester is that, you know, given that kind of fee structure, is it possible to disperse that across the city so that you don't have these, you know, these tenfold differences in rates?
So to answer your first question, right now, there are 10 individuals who've purchased the residential downtown permit and seven individuals who've purchased the quarterly downtown residential permit. So we have 17 people who have purchased that, and I believe, hold on just a second. We have two people that have purchased the Washington Street only permit. That one hasn't been super-publicized, but if people have come to me and asked about, you know, discounted rates, I've referred them to the Washington Street lot permit. To your second question about examining the, the permit rates, the fees here, that's, that's ongoing. I'm trying to quantify the costs that go into each permit program and, you know, find a reasonable rate for both the, the outlying districts, the residential pass, and then the downtown passes. Because we do have several different classes of, classes of passes. We have several different classes of passes. We have the downtown employee, downtown resident, the service vehicle slash landlord permit, the outlying resident, Washington Street, and now the contractor one also. So we're keeping an eye on how each of these perform, what the take rates are, how those get used, what the ticketing looks like, and we're still, it's a lot of data, and it's been a really strange year for all of the data. So it's, it's tough to know if I'm getting an accurate picture of what's going on and, and what regular usage would be like, or even if there ever will be such a thing as regular usage again. But we're, we're keeping an eye on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons, I saw your hand. I believe Councilmember Morgan had his hand up before that. Are you, do you still have questions, Councilmember Morgan?
It's more of a statement. I do believe, what Ms. Wester had mentioned, I, I, I think with our city layout, there has to be more exclusive parts than the other. I know we like to believe it's this one area, but like downtown and different places is more expensive to exist in most cities, and so it's no different in our city. I think when it comes to parking and congestion and living, the downtown area is more pricey, if you will. So I just, I, I don't, whether the price is too much or not, there's a distinct difference between platinum, gold, and silver. And I think those passes reflect all those different prices. And so I, I'm, I want to see a clearer picture. It's making sure it's fair based on, like, if it's comparable to other downtowns versus, it's just a jacked-up price. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
I think some of my comments are similar to Councilmember Morgan's, that, that, it is right, it's, and Ms. Wester can confirm, but right. I mean, depending on the location, you know, it's going to reflect the expense. And this is the reality of parking, I think, in any city. That's just what it is. I trust our staff that they are evaluating this and that the, the job they do in trying to figure out these prices. I, you know, I do think that it's significantly less than our area. You know, our next-door neighbor city that charges, you know, parking fees. I know working at University of Michigan, we have different ranges of parking, and the closer you are to downtown or to a premium place like Michigan Medicine, it's, you know, it could be $1,000 a year for parking. So it's, you know, so, so there's a premium depending on location, and, and I think that again is the reality. So I'm not interested in supporting any change today. I'll have you to look at it again when we come back around next summer, I think, for the next fee schedule, but I don't know that the rates are that out of whack. But again, if, you know, I, I trust that staff are doing their job and constantly, you know, assessing this, because I don't think that we have an interest in gouging anybody here at the city either.
Madam Mayor, I have one idea. So I've, as I've been researching these, the permit usage and the fees and what have you, one idea that's come up is making a discount available to people who meet certain income criteria. So I've had very preliminary discussions with Washoung, Washoung OECD about the programs they offer and how they verify income. And it seems like it could be a fairly relatively straightforward thing to administer if that is something that you would be interested in me researching further and bringing back as part of the fee schedule for next year. If that is something that you would be interested in me researching further and bringing back as part of the fee schedule for next year.
Would you please do that? Is that, council agree with that?
That's great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
For pushing for them, Annie, thank you so much for pushing for those constituents.
Yeah, I still think it's a bit high compared to the rest of the city, but.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
It is high compared to the rest of the city, but it's also less than a dollar a day for a year. So if you think of it in that terms, that's, I don't know any other city you can park downtown for that amount. But there's also a motion for amendments still on the floor.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
I have one more, like, I don't know if this is a possibility, Bonnie, but I think the issue is the amount at one time. So if parking passes could be rather than quarterly, monthly, I think the, the problem is it's a hundred and fifteen dollars at once or three hundred for the year. And I think that's where people struggle.
Are you wanting a response to that?
Just wanted to finish part of the thoughts regarding the, the motion. The city manager has her hand up, though, so.
Okay, city manager.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion that I'm hearing on tonight. And I do agree with Councilmember Simmons and actually Councilmember Wilcoxen as well about the fees and the schedule as it stands right now. But we are here to hear all sides and to try and come up with something that will aid the residents that live in these areas. And so I'm pleased that we have come to some, I don't want to say synergy, but I like the idea that Councilmember Somerville brought up for us to maybe change the schedule so that maybe it's more of a month-to-month. I, I just kind of hate for us to get into, getting into people's income, you know, and all of that kind of stuff. I, I prefer if we would just maybe allow them to be on a month-to-month basis so that it does spread the fee out. So I just wanted to put those comments in there. And I also agree that I think we should probably take this up when we do the fee schedule as a whole and then bring some of these scenarios back to you. I do want to go on record as saying I'm not really for the, and I don't have a vote, but I'm not really for the income-based one because that can be really hard. Are we going to start asking them for their paycheck, you know? How are we going to verify it? I, I would not want staff to get into all of that extra work. But I would be in support, in support of us going month-to-month.
Great, thank you. Okay, any more discussion on the amendment motion?
Yeah, I guess I moved to rescind that. I, I don't see a reason in going forward and voting on that tonight. And I appreciate the city manager's input on this. And I think, you know, it does get to the point of like, it's a bit invasive to do it based off of income because none of us, you know, you can do it based on calculations set by the county, but the reality is that certain people have, you know, life, student loans and, you know, many people have lost their source of income throughout this pandemic and could continue to, so. Or they're waiting months on end to receive unemployment. So some of that reality doesn't get factored into those calculations.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion?
Correct, and I appreciate the conversation.
That's supported that out. Are you willing to withdraw your support?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. So the motion, the amendment is off the table. However, the original motion is still before us. And is there, it sounds like we want to not act upon this until we have our fee schedule. So Mr. Bauer, do we need a, do we need to table this or how would we handle this motion?
Well, if you want, if you wanted to delay it, then yes, you would table it to a definite time. Ms. Westler, what was your intention to bring it today?
You're muted, Bonnie.
Yep, sorry. I think that the original motion on the table for the, for now modifications, including that contractor pass, I'm perfectly content to go forward with that and bring any further modifications back to you as part of the fully amended fee schedule at the beginning of next year, beginning, middle of next year.
So are you asking us to divide the, the resolution that's before us and vote on contractors' pass?
No, the resolution before you as it is now, I don't think that there was any issue with that that I heard from council.
Okay. All right. So is council ready to vote on the resolution that is before us that offers the weekly contractor pass?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions about the pa, weekly pass or comments? Okay, seeing then, Clerk Halanga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Westler, for bringing this before us and for the work that you will do on the fee schedule that will be coming up. Thank you.
Bonnie.
Council, moving on to Resolution Number 2020-244, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. The city has an existing contract with Passport Parking that provides for mobile payment via the Passport app. Whereas Passport is working with several partners to allow for third-party payments in the future. And whereas this amendment to the existing contract is required for the city to allow for third-party payments in the future, now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the attached amendment to the existing contract and authorizes the city manager to sign it.
Is there a motion?
I'm of.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Ms. Westler.
Hello, council. This is an amendment to our existing agreement with Passport Parking, which is our software vendor. This would allow them to share our parking data with third-party vendors like Google Maps and other software companies to allow people to pay for their parking when people pay for parking again via third-party apps. So if you were navigating to a place using Google Maps, you would then be able to use Google Maps to pay for your parking when you arrived at your destination. There's a few other applications with which they're integrating, but that, those are, that's the big-name one.
Questions for Ms. Westler, comments?
Is there an associated, oh, sorry.
Okay, I stuck Summer, Councilwoman Somerville's hand. Yes.
Um, yeah, is, with this, with the function with Google and with like the iMap situation, can folks like renew their time on their phone once they get to the destination? If it's like, if they didn't pay for enough, if that makes sense?
That might vary from app to app. That's something I could ask our partners. But my understanding of the way that their API works is that should be possible.
Okay, cool. It would make sense, but. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan.
Would this be considered a service? And if so, or is it a product? And what are the associated costs?
There is no associated cost to us.
Okay. Is this like a digital configuration that's going, it's like in the cloud or something that's giving us some kind of, it's technology, I'm sure.
The, the agreement is them basically asking our permission to share data about our parking configuration with third parties.
Okay. All the third parties are named. There are no like private third parties they could share information with, correct?
Well, right now, we're basically signing on to their relatively open API. So it could be any vendor that goes through their vetting process. So, but again, it would be in furtherance of people buying parking. It wouldn't be to somehow hack the parking system. It would just be that sort of buying, paying for their parking time.
Thank you.
Any other further, any other comments or questions?
I do, Mayor, just a.
Yes, please.
I just want to say thanks for all the work on the parking and moving our city's parking system into the 21st century, Ms. Westler and staff and city manager.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing then. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
She carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And seeing that that's the last resolution, I too would like to echo Councilmember Simmons in her thanks and appreciation, not just to Ms. Westler, but to Mr. Akers and to all of our staff, to the chief that is here and to the staff that's even not here for the work that, that they do and city manager to keep us on track and keep us moving forward. A great big thank you to all of you. All right, Clerk Halanga.
Council, the next item on the agenda is the liaison reports, first being SEMCOG update.
There's no update at this time.
Next item is Watts.
I, at last meeting before last, I mentioned that the meeting was canceled because of the unsettled issue of in-person meetings or not, but we have a meeting next week, so hopefully I'll have some more information for you.
Next, Urban County.
Yes, we had a meeting today and there were several things that were, were presented. There is an anticipation of some more HUD cares money. And MISTDA has funds, has provided funds, which is a broad eviction evasion money. And the county will have money until the end of the year, to December 31st. The county is looking to declare a state of emergency to continue virtual meetings. And that came from the chair of the, the county commissioners. So he didn't say exactly when, but that is, it should be imminent that they're going to just declare a state of emergency so that virtual meetings for all departments and all groups associated with the county can continue to meet virtually. And there's funds that are still available for people needing rent. And that is through, oh gosh, the assistance program that we gave, that the city gave money to. Yes, thank you, thank you. I kept seeing the Bs, but the rest of it weren't, wasn't there. There are also the MISTDA, the county has received quite a large sum from MISTDA, but it runs out. This also runs out at the end of the year for people that are in need of support and help with their rent. Okay, and there was a report from Amina Lovelock from Public Health, and she said that there were a hundred and twenty business, a hundred and twenty cases, well, a hundred and twenty businesses that had cases of COVID. And she went on to explain close, close contact. And these businesses had to be closed because of COVID there within the, amongst their employees. And she described close contact as anyone who has had face-to-face contact with a person for fifteen minutes or more, a, a person that does, that is positive for COVID for fifteen minutes or more. And the fifteen, fourteen-day quarantine is still in effect. There are, there's now also coming from OCED, there's funds available for plumber repairs as part of their, the county's program for weatherization and other services. They've added plumber repair services for wells and septic tanks. But it's only available through December. And this really is for people that are living pretty much in the out, outland parts of the, of the county. Also, the slides that, and the presentations that were presented today, we had several, they were forwarded and by email, and I will forward them to Mr. Halanga. And he can forward them to each of the council members. And you might want to let him know whether you're interested in receiving them or not before he forwards them to everyone. But that was it. There is some money available at the, at the county. Okay, I'm sorry, I did miss one. MEDC has a weatherization, has weatherization grant programs. And these are for businesses. And the money must all be gone by the twelve, December 31st. But this weatherization is for, for businesses, not individuals. The others that I mentioned were for individual people, homes. Thank you.
Council, the next item on the liaison reports is Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority.
Jake is here for that.
I don't, I don't think Christopher is here for that, but we do have a meeting next week, so.
Well, I can share a little bit. The, we're going ahead with the, the Christmas lights that, there will be Christmas lights on across and up at the water tower. Also, the city and the DDA are working together to put lights in Riverside Park. Again, this year, there will be lights also downtown Ypsilanti, and there will be a Christmas tree. So that is all going forward. And as Mr. Meyer said, we will have another meeting on next week.
Council, the next item on the agenda is Friends of Rutherford Pool.
That meeting is concurrent with this one. And I'm also the liaison to the Sustainability Commission, which had a meeting last night, so I need to catch up with them and I'll report back next week.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the two last ones should have been removed from this agenda. The Housing Equity Leadership Team, which no longer meets, and then the Youth Community Connection Team. So I will just remove those. We're on to council-proposed business.
Okay, thank you. Let's start up in the corner with Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Nothing.
Bringing back into this world.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Proton Brown, you're sitting right in the center.
The only thing that I had is that I received a call, a voicemail about street lighting on Hamilton between Ferris and Michigan Ave, so right by the senior high rap. Just complained to it being like really dark there, and as daylight savings time has occurred and it's getting darker earlier in the day, and folks are still out at, you know, the five and six o'clock hour walking, that it's really hard to see. In particular, the glare when cars are coming down Hamilton or turning from Michigan Ave to Hamilton in that small stretch. As you go further down, I drove that way on my way home this evening just to kind of look at it. It is, it seems to be more well-lit as you're getting closer to Harrier Street and the freeway on that stretch of Hamilton, but pretty dark right there at that intersection. So I don't know exactly, well, Mr. Akers and city manager, who is responsible for that lighting in that area? Because I don't know if it's like us or if it's DTE. But if we could just kind of look at it and see if maybe there are, maybe, maybe there's a bulb out there or something, I'm not sure, but it's really dark, basically. That's all.
Mayor Proton Brown, we are aware of that. And Mr. Akers, that is actually on his list, some of it, I think, is DTE. Mr. Akers? Are you here? Okay. Did you say he's gone?
No, he's here.
Oh, no, I'm here. What we'll do is we'll take a look at the area.
You know, the dark area.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. That is all, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll drop down to Councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, thank you. Few things, mainly want to just thank staff for being so proactive on the community outreach regarding the Water Street input sessions. Joe, and in particular, has been very helpful in getting me just materials to provide to residents. I know that Councilmember Morgan and I have talked about different ways that we can get information out. Looking forward to the second input session on Friday. Hopefully, we'll have time to flyer more of Ward Three before then. But it's just really, it's convenient that we have the information on Facebook for people to just say that they're going to the event, so they get the reminder when the event starts. So I don't think Elise is on, but I think she's the one who creates the Facebook events, if I'm not mistaken. So I just really appreciate all the avenues that we're using to reach out to constituents, to make the process more smooth. And also, just want to congratulate staff on a job well done for the election. We got a lot of positive feedback from residents, including a glowing review in the Ypsilanti area discussion. So congratulations to everyone. I know that it's very difficult to work an election. I was, I worked in election once, and it was a very long day. And I know that there was a lot of stress around this election in terms of making sure that all the absentee ballots got counted in a good, sufficient amount of time. So just wanted to say thank you, mainly to everyone tonight for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Moving right over to Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, not many. I want to give a shout out to Chief DeDucey and his staff. I read the police reports nightly, and just, it lets me know how important it is to, with the team, we talk about with community policing and these strategies, how important it is to have other professionals on the scene when dealing with those with different types of ailments and illnesses. And just reading some of those comments and how, I mean, just with a small police force that we have, I think they're doing an admirable job in the face of a lot of different things. So I, because when they're not doing so well, I'll be the first to say something. So I definitely want to just say they're doing an amicable job. Secondly, one of my neighbors just so happens to have, between the street and the sidewalk, just, I would consider what would be called a garden. And she asked me to come over, and I'm looking at her garden, but then she walks me up to city property, which has some of the same things there, and it's growing higher. And asked me, what's the difference between her yard and the city's yard? And so, and I can't identify plants or what's noxious, I don't have any. So basically, I think some of our citizens, especially around between Oak Street and other freight houses, some area, where people, the first thing they do is talking about the city cleaning our own house before we start pointing fingers at them. So again, I don't enforce ordinances, we just help create them. So maybe, I know it's a specific area, right, between the freight house and like, it's a parking lot, right, over here off, behind the freight house, Oak Street and River Street, and so just some of the areas over there. But she does a great job, but man, she said for the last 10 to 12 years, she's been helping maintain that area. And, and she, basically, it's the city's land, but she's maintaining it, not wanting the city to tell her kind of what to do with it. So it's not my place, I just want to bring that to the attention of DPS or whoever maintains some of that area, that people are still concerned about the noxious weeds. So I think it's still, people need a little more clarity on that. And I just want to say, I'm glad we're serving from, with you guys, and I think we have a real strong team, and we're making it through COVID together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And that takes us around the corner and up to Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Morgan, for your nice comments. I agree, I think we have a good team, and also want to thank staff and Chief DeDucey and his folks, and Mr. Hobbs and the firefighters and everybody that works for our city. As a citizen, I just really appreciate everybody. I think the only thing that I really have to say is that myself and Mayor Proton Brown and Councilmember Morgan should be hopefully getting you some information soon with the reviews. We're just looking to find some mutual agreeable time, agreeable time to sit down and kind of talk about that stuff. So hopefully, we'll have some, something soon for the city manager and clerk's, you know, review process. So we know we've been, you know, delaying in getting that out, but, but soon, right, guys? We're, okay.
Very soon, I echo you.
Very soon, right, Anthony?
Thank you so much for bringing it up.
Check your email, check your mail. Anyway, but that's, that's all, I just wanted to give that update, but anyway, otherwise, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right. Okay. Clerk Kalenga, we're moving, council proposed, okay? I have a couple of things that I'd like to say. One, council, I mean, city manager, and this is for you and for Mr. Jackson. 411 Second Avenue. The gentleman has gone, the area that, the, how can I put it? The yard needs some attention, the porch needs some attention, not so much the grass or anything. But I do believe that this is the gentleman that accumulates things, and I believe that he has packed in a little bit more than before. There's a couple of cars or a car and a truck, and it seemed like another vehicle that's back behind there. And I don't even know if they're able to find a way up the steps and across the porch to the door. So if you could please have something done, I believe the last time that he was, he cleaned it out, we actually, Mr. Bauer was able to communicate through some, I don't know if it was friends or family or what, and got it straightened out. But it's, it's worse than ever now, so. But, and the address is 411 Second Avenue. The other thing is, oh, they're putting in the new playground equipment at Park Ridge Community Center, and there's a lot of excitement and buzz around there. That was a CBDG month, came out of the county CBDG, and the people actually showed up in the midst of COVID to decide which playground equipment that they wanted. So it is going, it should be finished by, by this week, so that's exciting. Also, if this is something that we could maybe start thinking about, I have attended a couple of virtual, well, virtual birthday parties. And one, we played games, and it was really quite exciting. The other one, we all, I think everybody on here knows Gail Summerhill, and she was, some friends of hers gave her a virtual birthday party. But I was wondering if we could maybe start thinking about and looking at the possibility of us having a virtual all-city staff gathering. We used to have, I don't know if, there's a few people on here that know that we used to have city staff Christmas parties at City Hall, and we haven't for the last couple of so years. But if, well, we could, if staff maybe look into that, and if it's possible, I don't know. But it would be, I think it would be nice if we could in some way or other, so.
I've got a bunch of ugly Christmas sweaters.
Well, we could, that could be something, yes.
I love Christmas. I also have all my Christmas decorations out already.
Okay. You're one of those early people, all right, good. So, but if we could do that. The other thing is, I just want to again say thank you. I just echo what I said a little bit ago about thanking the staff for the job that's being done, appreciate it. And just believe that we can, one thing I would like to ask, if, and I do plan, hopefully, we can have some individual meetings. But if, if I could ask all of council to write down their personal goals for what they would like to see the city of Ypsilanti become, or what they would like to see happen in the city in, say, the next year or so, even the next six months, or what, what their ultimate goal is for the city. So if we could all do that, I would really appreciate it. And if we could all have a time to have a, get together by threes, I know we can't do it by fours, but to discuss it and see how much we are together in agreement on what we'd like to see the city become. So that's it for me right now. Looking forward to working with everyone. And I think we had a, I enjoyed the meeting tonight. We took care of business, but also, we were all, I think, very relaxed, and takes the stress out of it. So, thank you.
Mayor, next item on the agenda is communication from the city manager.
Yes, thank you.
Great, good evening, almost good night. First, I want to thank city council for the discussion we had tonight around parking. I want to thank you for your forward thinking by adopting the parking strategy a while ago. I've been here for a little bit of time, and it's been an uphill battle dealing with parking and getting to the place where we are now. And so I just really want to thank council for being open to it. I've realized that a lot of things we're doing now, and Andrew is my witness. They were out, they were laid out a long time ago, and council wasn't, wasn't accepting at the time. So I'm really appreciative of each council member that has taken these things to heart. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Second, it's already been mentioned, but the Water Street public engagement sessions, I want to thank all those that attended the first one, and I want to encourage you to attend the second one and invite also your neighbors or people that haven't heard about it. I've taken it up on myself to invite Mary Kerr, to invite Rodney Peterson, Ricky Jefferson, some people from the community, because we want to get a buy-in from all the stakeholders, and so that our developers can also know who these people are when they're trying to maybe seek funding. So if you can be there Friday at 10, that would be great, because they may have something to say that would be worth listening to as well. And then the final one is going to be on November 18th, as you know, at 5 o'clock. That's scheduled to be an in-person session, and we're going to be all masked up, and we're going to obey the social distancing requirements. The attendees will be limited. So we're still working out how that's going to go. People may have to come through and go out. Hopefully, we'll have some conceptual drawings available as well. And want to remind you to complete the diversity and inclusion online training, if you haven't already done so. We'd appreciate it if you do that. And lastly, has anyone tried to text my Go mobile app yet? Okay, so we have, as I said before, we have offered another layer to make contacting the city for issues a little bit more easier, since we're all tech savvy. I want to encourage council to just try it out yourselves, so you can let me know what you think about it. And what I will do is I'll send you guys my flyer, and it has some keywords and things, just so that you can sample it out. I appreciate it, appreciate your feedback, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk Kalenga, when you did the liaison reports, did you mention Y-PAC?
So the liaison reports don't currently hold any boards and commissions, nor have they ever since I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
If council would like, we could, we could put all boards and commissions on the liaison reports. For that resolution council requested for next week, I was, it was going to include something in it. It was going to be that council give board and commission liaison reports during proposed, council proposed business. However, if council prefers, we can do it during liaison reports.
I just was wondering, I didn't hear it, that's why I was listening, but it's okay, thank you. And Chief, the floor coming along?
Yes, it's coming along. They're back out working again today, they'll be back tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Speaking of liaisons to commissions, I did not see that addition. It wasn't on the agenda tonight. We moved it. I thought we were going to do that is from last night. Was that for tonight, or is that the next meeting, Clerk Kalenga?
That's going to be December 1st, once the seventh member is appointed.
Okay, all right, thank you, that makes sense. Okay, all right, is there anything else for the good of the order? Chief Hobbs?
I am unmuted. I'd like to have everybody join me and wish Councilmember Anthony Morgan happy birthday.
Yes, see, they did it for me, yes.
We can always do it again.
Happy birthday.
You see these four gray hairs, you see them gray hairs popped up, oh man. Thank you so much, I appreciate it, everybody.
I hope everybody joins in.
I'm old, thank you so much, everybody, I appreciate it.
Yes, happy birthday again, though, okay.
Happy birthday.
All right. If there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:49.
Motion to adjourn. I'm tired of Ohio. I've been up since 3:30 this morning, I'm tired.
Are you in? Are you in Ohio now?
I'm in Columbus, yeah.
Oh, geez.
Right, right.
Didn't you hear me say a little bit of? Didn't you hear me say a little bit ago?
I've been up since 3:00 AM. I'm going to bed.
All right, so I'm assuming that all hearts are clear and I can declare the meeting adjourned. Love is the answer. Remember that.